This is clock, uh, call this meeting of the Perigence Board of Trustees order for children's children's pledge allegiance.
I'd like to.
Do by the United States of America.
Into the world's families.
One nation under God.
In this world, whatever occasions.
Well. When they call you forward the other day.
Uh, see our availability for meeting.
Oh, that's done.
That's where they're at, okay. Thank you. Okay, um, before you set a minutes, uh, for the regular session of August twenty first, twenty twenty three, I'll promote it for it. I'll make that motion.
Uh, second.
Vote?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Uh, Michelle is going to be late, which is on her way to school, um. Worthington Hills, um. Let's see, a couple of things, I think we had a, uh, five K runs, and I want to thank the officers for being up there for that, um. And also, uh, there's the, uh, the bike bus event. I think we're, did we have a meeting with county engineer?
That's coming up.
Mike and Draco.
Hmm, I have not seen that.
You could go down there and ask.
Sure.
Michael Breako, because Rob Smith reached out from the school district about. I don't know, update on the safe house of schools, I think.
So do you want the same group as before?
Yeah, I'm gonna send you a little string of emails.
Okay.
From, uh. Among the folks from the school district.
Okay.
Um, but we might want to remind him to remind the parents. That they can't block the roadways. Waiting for it to. They too have to follow the guidelines, so. Um. And, um, EPCON, I think we're gonna be talking about the, uh, castle property when there's some roadwork occurring down there.
Yeah.
Got his notes.
Got his notes.
Right. So Chief, you're up. How's things at the fire?
Absolutely great, you know, got a chance to hire quite a few new people, we had some retirements, vacancy group in here for about a year or so. We have other folks on board, we got a grant to hire, uh, three additional full-time firefighters for three years. Uh, we have added them, so we're down to this one vacancy now, which is wonderful for our people, because there's a lot of, uh, mandatory overtime happening, we don't want that to happen. It really affects their morals, it makes them, uh, more likely to have injuries and illnesses, we're very fortunate to have many people on board.
Did you steal them from somewhere else, or did they just?
Uh, some of them were from other.
It's okay, we, we recruit.
We recruited some folks from other departments, but, um. This last batch, none of them were full-time elsewhere, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a different world right now, it's probably the same for Chief Cicero, where it's getting harder and harder to find people. And we're usually one of the places that people want to go to first, um, and it's just there's less paramedics out there, so we've started to hire people who are EMTs or RNCs in med, to med school. Um, but it's a different climate than it was five years ago, it's definitely a different climate than it was when we started. Um, so, uh, we're just having to adapt. Improvise, adapt, and overcome, so we're very happy with the folks that we just brought on board. Um. Other than that, we're just doing our usual, taking lots of runs and, uh, and, and getting out there and, and, uh, trying to see people in an non-emergency setting. Um, uh, because we'd rather see people not in emergency at their home, or wherever, not their home, but wherever, than, uh, when it's the worst day for them. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that Chris, Chief Craig was unable to make it tonight, so Jenny and I, uh, came, he takes two of us to kind of cover his presence. Um, but, uh, we, we wanna, we wanna make sure somebody's here at least every quarter, and with this being an off, uh, we, we, I usually have my city council meeting the same night as you guys have your board trustees meetings. So we wanted, I wanted to come this meeting, and then either Chris, Jenny, or I will be here, uh, once a quarter, just to be here, if you guys have any questions. Um, I want to get that started back up again, or started up, I should say, uh, and, and if you guys need us anytime between then. Just call us, we'll be here, but I want to make sure that we're here to, to, so you guys all get who we are, but also know that we're here for, to help you out anyway. So, and I am looking forward to that meeting, um, whether that can, that can happen.
Yeah.
Um, but, so.
Um, I could definitely help them. For, in front of our, our office.
Did you get your fire question answered?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, the, uh, so I know quarterly, there, we have Wednesday meetings, Wednesday holiday, and, and, so I, I would think that each quarter, there's one of those holidays, and kind of fall on a Monday, so maybe we can. Figure those dates out to, so that you can obviously be council meetings, where you need to be, and also. Surely make a chance to get there, so.
Yeah. If, if the agenda's like a council, I'm always, that's historic for, uh. The, the chance to get out of there.
Okay.
So.
How's Robin doing?
She's wonderful. Yeah, she's, she's. I've, uh, worked for a lot of leaders, and she's definitely the, uh, I can say she's in the top one. Whoever went for, I'm, I'm very happy to be working with.
We're also very happy to have Chief Silver.
It's great to hear.
We're like. I like the chief a lot.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna love him, um, he has a great sense of humor, um, he's very professional, he's very analytical, um, he loves data. Um, but he's just a good, a good person, a great firefighter, great paramedic, so I think you gotta, uh, a good one for at least a while, so, um, he's a good friend.
Yeah.
He was actually here last time.
He's not going anywhere, is he?
No, no, we're all in the same trajectory, so.
Okay, good.
So we have a little while.
Good, well, my dentist told me three years ago he wasn't retiring, then he just told me he's retiring, but.
Yeah.
Those people are retiring on it, so.
Chris and I can't, we gotta be here for a while, we have things to do.
Uh, on that note, um, fire, um, smoke detector. Are we starting back up with that, or are we doing that, or are we?
We did one, uh, this past May, April.
Yeah.
Uh, so we do them every spring.
Yeah.
So we can look at the calendar and see.
Continue to do that, no?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had a question, um, did you have any comments on that special event forum that was sent around?
So, special, our, uh, new, uh, operations support tech, uh, if you've met him yet, Dan Kowensberger, he's actually an, uh, retired paramedic firefighter. Um. He though, I, he, we talked about a little bit, and we both decided that it needed to go to Tom Lindsay to be.
Okay, sure.
Sign anything, shouldn't be, uh, Tom, uh, has not got back this yet.
Hey, that's fine.
I'll, I'll remind him.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You know, we just want to make sure we got yours and Chief Simmer's input on this, so.
How much more time do we need to build into that, what is that? Tom is your legal partner, I think.
Mm-hmm. No, maybe in a couple of weeks, we should be fine, and then Luke can finalize the changes and we'll be set to go.
Okay. We, we, we find it very helpful. Kind of know what's going on.
Absolutely.
So.
We, we like to know too, so even if we're not, uh, planning on attending, we can at least know in case we get a response in that area.
Right.
We put those all on our calendar, anytime we get a notice of a block party or any special event, so that, those are very important to us.
Okay.
Anything else, more? We appreciate the reports, as always, so. Uh, and if there's anything that we can do, uh, for you all, others know, you've been very helpful and great partners, we appreciate, I know we have a. About that we have a wellness works, right, that you helped us with.
Yeah, it's lovely, but finally.
Well, it was until just before this meeting, um, I finally got the approvals from the school and the lady that's gonna be doing. Coordinating and or speaking, um. Those dates are now gone, so I'm gonna be.
That's off the list.
Right, uh, yeah, I'd added it back, so, um, I'll get with, um, Sergeant Miller. I, I know, um, Officer Rice is gonna take over that piece to it, so I'll get with him tomorrow and see what other options we have.
Okay. Okay, you're welcome to stay, I mean, it's.
It's very work.
Exciting stuff, you know?
There's M and M, so.
I saw.
Reese's cup.
Now we're here, we're here.
Um, zoning.
Um, Jen will have our, uh, zoning at the next meeting. So. I asked her to get it to a second, get it out to everybody.
Anybody else?
If you can look at it.
Um. Okay. Um, Anderson Heights question, what was?
Uh, that was actually, I, I talked to Keith, that was discussed at the last meeting, forgot to take it off, so.
Go.
And, um, he did say that, um. Sixty-eight forty-seven Merwood is looking really good, she just had the grass cut again yesterday, um. Ian actually happened to go up to Oakbourne and speak with the lady there. Um, they were working on some drainage issues, and she advised him that she has a crew coming out to start working on the backyard this week, so.
I didn't know when I see it.
So, um, Keith is keeping on top of it the best he can with the parameters he has to follow, so.
He, he's coordinating with Ian, because Ian had pulled into that.
Right, 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 we did, we reached out to a, a local gentleman here, and he gave us some, a couple of recommendations of folks to take care of some of these. Difficult properties when it pops up, um, the castle house being one.
Yeah.
So, um, that's gonna require some large equipment, so the guys are reaching out to those folks to get them in, to get estimates and such.
Do we have to go through a bidding process for that, or is that something?
Um, that house down on Riverside, Keith will have, um, requests to, for y'all to declare the nuisance next, next meeting, which I guess is next week, right? No? No, that's right, it's, it's a week out. We have back-to-back somewhere, but yeah.
Two, so.
Right, right, so, um, that will be on the agenda for the next time, and, um, hopefully get that cleaned up quickly.
Yeah. Rhode?
Well, I'm zoning Rhode and the police chief tonight, hope you don't mind.
Yeah, so I sent out some drawings, um, I'm slowly putting together, uh, a set of drawings, just sort of kind of looking through some details, some, you know, like. A deep concrete pad, asphalt overlay, things that, um, I think it's gonna help everybody get on the same page, and it's just working with Hamlin Rinaldi, um, Ed. Talked to a structural engineer today, he thinks it's, um. Uh, it's not really, but anyways, basically, all of this information is gonna help us make our permitting set so much smoother and easier, so it's just kind of, I just wanted to share with his and get it more. Um, more information on it, but I see Ian's kind of tracking, which is great, I think it's many, it's many pricing things that we can get, that we can get, so.
And I, and I think the, the information we got from.
JLC?
Who?
JLC.
No. Who's the chair of the?
Jerome.
Jerome.
Yeah.
That we're not in the ballpark.
Yeah.
That's the impression that I got.
Okay.
Yeah, very much so.
That's way, like. Somewhere, some other city.
Okay, well, that was, uh, when I sat down with Ed, Ed goes, this isn't a real complicated project, he goes, how much is the shelter, and I go. I go, you know, I don't know, but, um, so anyway, I, I think we're.
We're not going to bomb Joe, we're doing.
No, it's just, I, I think it's just, you know, kind of, uh, unearthing, and in all fairness to the company, I mean, they didn't have a lot of details to go through, you know, the, and so, they, it's just working through the details like the typically do, so it's, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I, if you don't mind, I was just gonna mention that, um, I made a copy of Ian's report. Um, folks are either on vacation or had a family thing going tonight, so, that's why we're a little shy. But, um, he kind of runs through the iron court. Down at the very bottom, Michelle, um, it says that testing and inspections on the newly extended water line and hot box passed this week, and construction is moving further onto the golf course. DLC is still using iron court to gain access, the mound will go back with a slight alteration to accommodate the newly installed hot box. So, that's at the very bottom.
Right, no, I see it.
Yeah.
What is a hot box?
I have no idea.
Is that a large?
It's the same hot box that we're gonna put in our office complex, yeah, pretty large.
Okay.
What are they, are they, I'm like, they're doing the same above ground, but a hot box is basically fairly large.
We, we.
What are they doing?
Yeah.
What is going on there and where?
Who's, who's, who's the project manager?
Um, it's DLC, I'll find out.
Okay.
And, and get pictures or something.
I'm happy to meet somebody over there, and they can talk, you know, whatever is easier.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just.
And maybe if we can have.
I'm envisioning this enormous large box right at the end of the.
You got it.
You know, like.
By story.
Neighbors will love that.
Um, yeah, if we could have Ian coordinate something, ensure Michelle's there.
Okay, whatever. Right.
That'd be great.
Um. So anyway, there, I just, I'll go, start at the top on, um, September fifth, whether permitting roadway repairs will be going on through phase two of EPCOM. And prep for the final clean and paving the following week, no cars can be parked on the street in phase two. There'll be no roads, road closures on Tuesday, but please use extra caution, so I'll share that with, uh. With Ann, oh, that was actually, that was yesterday, so that's already happened, um, the twelfth, whether permitting, the phase two will undergo cleaning and prep for final paving. Again, no cars on the streets. Um, the thirteenth, all streets in phase two will be closed to traffic and paving will be beginning at the, in the rear section of phase two, moving outward. Homeowners in phase two will need to move the vehicles and park them in available parking spots and on the streets throughout phase one. Um, this salt barn, he's, we, I don't know, I think he's already talked to you about this, Andy, but he's asked, uh, Daryl Miller from Great Lake Tension Structures to re-quote a thirty by fifty. Um, and he provides the detail there.
I looked, I looked at, uh, company up on the internet, I don't have any information on the internet.
Yeah, I know this is, is a place that he's worked for, with before, and I'm pretty sure Brian.
Okay.
His predecessor.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
Yeah.
Information off their, off their website, now I have a website, so I'm looking sure.
Yeah, I know I've heard about these, these guys over time, so. Um, and then there's a, an update on the generator, uh, from Jim Green, our sales rep, uh, the completion date for the generator is expected to be November fourteenth. Um, I would like to try and schedule a facility meeting at some point, so we kind of know where, discuss where the placement's gonna be for the new generator. Um, and he needs time to either extend the current pad to the size needed, or build another one if they decide to place the generator somewhere else, so just.
Maybe at the end of my own court.
Right, or on top of, so.
There you go.
There you go.
So we can, we can store the generators. Foreverly here.
Yes, correct, yeah.
We'll figure that out, okay.
That was all he had on that.
Any questions? Um. Now that EPCON, are we, I saw Anne's email blast that went out to the residents, are we doing that, or are we getting that?
I didn't, I didn't see any email blast.
Thanks.
Um, this is about the roadwork and such.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can double check. But if you could forward me what she sent, usually Ian gets with Luke and preps things, so.
Well, this is, it's a string, but.
Okay.
Okay, uh, do we have a fire report? Other than your one?
It's twenty-two runs for the.
Police Department.
As.
Or police chief in Florida.
He is, having a fall, I understand, um, September ninth, there's a special event on newcomer, a street concert. October twenty-second, there's a five K race for global cancer in Worthington Hills, you have both of those, I assume?
I have one.
Okay, just so you know, if you're not added, Luke sends us, it's like an automatic notification when those thing, those event forms are approved, so if you're not on it, I'll ask him to add you folks.
Can we add, uh, Dan Kowensberger, I, I want to turn the issue to address.
Okay.
You know, press.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he manages our calendar.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
The calendar's viewed by the, the, the town chiefs, so they know what, what's going on.
So we just send it, just make sure he's advised, okay? Yep, just go ahead and send me his email, and I will go ahead and keep care of that for you.
Apologies for missing the public comment period, but, um, I will be submitting a request, an event request, for our fall block party hog roast, which will be October fourteenth. Um, on Merwin, and. For those of you, uh, Buckeye fans, that would be an away game against Purdue, and we don't know if the time will be an evening game or not, so we might be watching something else, but.
October fourteenth.
Yes. And, and Beth, you, you folks do not have that request yet, I need to put it in.
No, okay, that's fine.
We're in charge, Michelle, probably for that one.
Perfect.
Um.
Give me a reason not to coordinate it.
Okay. You're up, then, most fair.
Alrighty, well, I'm gonna do the hopefully easier, easiest one first, um, we've been talking about a new accounting program, budgeting program for the township. Um, I did get the quote for the one that Washington Township uses, um, which was fifty-two thousand dollars, um, to start, eighty-six hundred dollars annually. This, however, was a company that there's been somewhat of a max, a mass exodus from, so, um. The one that I'm continuing, gonna go ahead and still and recommend is Software Solutions VIP City Worthington uses the program, I know I spoke with Assistant Chief Craig, and he's been very pleased with it so far, Mifflin uses it. There's, um, was a whole list that I provided you of folks that came over from Sevica to this particular company, um, I've, I've been pretty pleased with the, the feedback that I've gotten, and the. It does seem to be very, very user-friendly, as I said, Mary and I spent about an hour and a half over at Mifflin getting walked through all the different modules. Um. If the board chooses to both, um, allow us to do this, I would recommend, and Michelle and I talked about it the other day, about taking advantage of their zero percent interest, um, and spreading it out over three years. I would also like to recommend that with the pair, package as it stands now, there's two years of UAN data that's pulled over. I would recommend hat, getting three more, because typically when we're doing comparisons, we're looking at a five-year, um, looking back five years. And that is fifteen hundred dollars per year, um, for those three years totaling forty-five hundred dollars. There's, um.
And that's a one-time cost.
It's a one-time cost, right, yep. So, I, what I did was, and I checked with other entities, how they kind of divvied up the cost, and they went on the, um, the annual budget of each. So, the way it broke down was general would be, um, taking about seventeen percent of the cost, road eighteen percent, and police. Has the largest budget, so it'd be sixty-five percent of the cost, um, I've talked to each one of the department heads, they seem to feel comfortable with that. So, um, so any case, my recommendation is to do the three-year financing, go ahead with the SSI VIP software, we'd probably be, if, if. We turn it in now, we'd probably be looking at the beginning of the third quarter for it to be up and running and ready to go, so.
Fourth quarter of twenty-four.
Twenty-four, correct.
Beth and I also talked about, uh, just to acknowledge that the UAN system would still, we would keep that up for at least a quarter, if not six months, just to make sure that we didn't lose the data. And access.
Beyond.
Right, um, so we would have, you know, access to UAN while we got our comfort level and everything up, to make sure that they didn't wipe the data and we didn't lose it going forward.
So, fine.
They're not a friendly group for me, you know?
Just to be sure, so there would be a little bit of overlapping costs.
Correct.
During that time.
Have any questions at all?
Um, this is just a sidebar, so, are. Are we gonna be able to still get the same type of reporting that we have on our Excel spreadsheets?
Right, it's had to be downloaded from the program instead of us re-putting information into a spreadsheet, yes. Yeah, it's much more easily accessible, and actually, uh, when we went over to Mifflin, she was showing us how the, the board and the fiscal officer were able to log in, and there's, there's. In comparison to the others we looked at, there's just an abundance of reports you can pull, that means what you might like to see might be different than what Jim or Michelle or Chad would like to see.
Okay.
So we were, I know it's kind of pricey, but not as pricey as Westerwolds, um. Um.
So how do we build, how do we build the twenty-twenty-four, but are we just gonna keep, continue with the existing Excel spreadsheet until this ends up and running in twenty-four?
Right, I'll just keep going with that, yeah.
So, that was my, uh, question, do you have like sort of blank copy, like that we can? Like, put twenty-twenty-four budget numbers on so we can start?
Yeah, what I can probably do is just with twenty-twenty-three, I can create a column for, you know, budgetary twenty-twenty-four, like.
Yeah.
I did with the UAN over the summer.
Okay.
I, you know, you have your actuals, and, and then you can.
Cause I start.
Play with the numbers.
I've been going through second quarter numbers, and I just want to make sure, like, I started, and I was like, I should probably ask Beth if she has it, has some, uh, like a template already that we could.
Yeah, I think, I think if we just use what I've been using and add on, um, columns.
Okay.
Um, like I said, it would be similar to when I do the summer budget.
Okay.
The one that's doing the summer, so.
Yeah.
But you can, this program, you can pull it, you know, with Excel, you can do PDFs, you, you know.
Cool.
Right, so.
Found reports, you can build your own, whatever.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So do you need authorization for the sixty-two-two and the eighteen-five-five-oh? In the roster, this is sixty-two.
Um. I think I would just as soon get the approvals for, um, the, the, both, plus the. Um, the act, the additional three years of pulling the data, which would be a total of forty-five hundred dollars for the extra three years of data.
So. Eighty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty plus the forty-five-hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-five-two-fifty.
Yeah.
What is it?
Eighty-five-two-fifty.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-two. Let's see if my.
Okay.
Hey. I don't know if, if you'd want to authorize me to go ahead and sign and start that process.
Do that too.
Please.
Shall we see the con, do we have, we don't have a contract yet.
Yeah, it's all in the, it's in there.
Oh.
It's all together.
I see it, never mind, yeah.
Are we good at eighty-two, eighty-five, two-fifty?
Just a minute. Eighty-five-two-fifty.
Cheaper than a fire truck.
A lot of things are cheaper than a fire truck.
I'm sorry. I thought the other day, I was thinking, how many signatures could I get versus one fire truck, so?
I would say probably twenty.
You're sixty thousand now.
Oh, and, uh. Well.
Well. Well. You still have to wait, okay. You get them over there, well. Okay, uh, I'd move to authorize the township administrator to sign the contract with Software Solutions VI, or VIP program. And authorize the expenditure of eighty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which covers the one-time cost plus the annual cost, plus the. Forty-five-hundred, which is the additional years, uh, of action.
Uh, second.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, um, so I would like, uh, you tend to make a motion for this every year, to hold, um, the twenty-twenty-three trick or treat on October thirty-first, which is a Tuesday. From six to eight P M, that is, um, per Morpse's recommendations.
Is that Morpse's recommendation, and Worthington and anybody else?
I don't know about Worthington, but. Is that?
All neighbors choose to change the date if there is rain, fog, mist.
Right.
Yeah, any other.
Yeah.
Inconvenient weather.
Um, I'll make that motion, okay, uh, second vote, yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Um, the Citizen Advisory Committee met last week to discuss the energy aggregation um, for electric and gas. They uh, they had met the end of June, gone outspoken to their. Their fellow residents and got quite a bit of feedback, their recommendation is for us to push out the apples to apples. Um, there there are even people on the committee that didn't know about that through PUCO. So that's their recommendation to trying and get people to know that it's there, use use that. Um, prior to looking at an aggregation, but the fat, the feedback they were getting is residents. Didn't want to have to opt out of anything like that, they didn't want somebody else setting up a program for them and so on and so forth. So y'all okay with that?
Opt out versus opt in.
Right, you have to opt out, you can't opt in, so exactly.
I think we should make it a part of the newsletter, just have like a little apples to apples box for that quarter.
That's a good idea.
Does change, because I'm telling you, it's, well, it's weird, cause like, you know, I'm kind of. A stickler about this, but um, the Columbia gas price is cheaper that they're offering right now than like any other rate that you would look at. AEP, you know, just went through the roof about sixty days ago with their electric cost, you know, like tripled to, you know, one point something. And there's, there's a number of places you can get less than half of that locked in for twelve months. Again, I just don't think most people know about that.
You know, I.
If you just pay the standard rate right now in America, electric, you're gonna get killed compared to.
They'll save so much money on my water though.
Don't get me started on water, or or a deduct meter or anything like.
Right.
Or we could have.
But I just stirred the pot a little bit there.
There you go.
But instead, it would, you know, all you could do is just, you know, alert people to the website, but just publish like, you know, the top three lowest rates. You know, whatever it is, direct energy, Dominion Energy, something.
And we can do that easy enough, I did ask Luke to try and squeeze, I wasn't sure how much room he had in the newsletter this time around, but I think he was gonna try and squeeze that in. Um, speaking about AEP. Um, got notification which I shared with you late this afternoon, um, they are looking at, I believe it was in June, they had a pretty nice. Hike, and now they are requesting the PUCO approve um. Invest, so that they can invest one point five billion in the distribution grid over the next four years. Um, customers would see an annual increase of less than one percent or a dollar fifty a month. Um, they're saying that this is to address aging infrastructure and serve new customers in our growing service community, um, PU CEOs. The staff is, the staff has weighed in, but they haven't officially approved it yet. So more good news.
Gonna be a, yeah.
Right.
I just sent you something today.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I'll give you this, well, if you could, we can talk a little bit, maybe tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Um.
Send it to the board and say this is what we're looking at.
Yeah, because I did get some feedback um, on one of the sentences in here that we might need to tweak. Okay, so um, like I said, the suicide prevention workshops, I had it all nailed down and now it's not, so we'll regroup on that. Um, flu shots are gonna be here on the twenty second of September, um. If anybody, I've got, I'll be sending something out later this week, so if anyone wants COVID boosters or anything like that, um, they'll accommodate for that as well. But it's gonna be the twenty second from ten to two. Um, the uh, did get new, good news from BWC, our rates are going down four percent. Um, in the upcoming year, so that was kind of a.
Things don't go.
Nice something, right? Uh, let's see, the staffing study for the police and admin, they've um, they're finishing up on collecting the data for the police. To put run those numbers, um, and then um, they, and it kind of sit down with Luke and Mary to try and figure out workload. And this, that and the other this, uh, at the end of last week, so um, hope, I'm hoping by the next meeting I'll have something for all of you guys. Um, so that we can, for our building, we can kind of start planning and same with the police department.
Chief, do you have a flu shot? No, I was just going to say.
Well, I was gonna send this out to our zoning boards, um, the HOA boards, um, as well, if that's okay. And the last thing, um, going back to the Citizen Advisory Board, which I guess is kind of ties in with Ian's is. They were wondering about the the status of facilities. I told them that we found out about the salt barn, that's kind of pushed things off a little bit, but is there any other feedback you'd like for me to give them?
Well, I'll do it.
Not there yet.
All partners coming together.
All partners coming together. All right, okay, um, well, unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have.
Um. Well, I didn't talk, where where are we on the reciprocal movement anywhere?
Uh, you had suggested I write a letter to. Yeah.
When you talk about.
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
And we could have a meeting.
Right.
Five things, when we talk to them about, one of them is Mr. Roper's mailbox, which the email I got back from Dave was. I am supposed to be care of that, but why would we be taking care of it?
I have absolute no idea.
Okay, that's why I think we need to get on the phone with him, because you guys are mixed up, I am told me. I told him today. I'm I'm sort of showing the mailbox for our three neighbors. We want a one poster, we're gonna steal one poster, because we can't find anything to match the two that were damaged, one's really damaged, one's. Pretty damaged, and one's not damaged, but you you can't, it's gonna look stupid, we have all these to match and everything, so we're just gonna get one post. With a bar with three things on it, I said, we'll put that together, I'll do the cost of materials, which won't be that much. And I said he can install it.
Okay.
And he will just build Aqua. Oh, okay, so that's.
That will work.
I think that's what he meant.
Yeah, I know he was gonna get you some examples, like he had a drawing that he had last week, he'd.
Either way, I was paying for it, was there a problem?
One way or the other.
Yeah, they, well, either Aqua or. Yeah, they're the ones who, they're the ones who actually did it.
And our audit ended on Friday, a half a day late, but it ended, I did ask when, before he left site. When we could expect the report, he wasn't sure, so.
How long was it normal, this was a full audit?
I mean, the, yeah, last follow-up was three years, yeah, three years ago, or actually, no, more than that.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, six years ago, so I I remember I did, it took about a month to get. And and right after they left, they still had questions here and there, but I think it took about a month to get the full report.
Well, that's where, we're not gonna get tripped up again on the uh, coming a separate line item for the full-size candy bars, we shouldn't be okay.
Yeah.
You know, you're nitpicky, and that's your audit feedback.
Okay.
Okay, my turn.
Yes.
Um, request a motion to establish a fund number twenty nine sixteen for the National Opioid Settlement Fund revenue.
I got a question.
What was the?
A thousand, yeah.
Well, okay. I make this a motion, second vote, yes, yes.
And request approval to release payment in the amount of thirty nine thousand five hundred eighty six dollars and sixty five cents. Or uh, to the Franklin County Auditor for Worthington Hill Space.
I'll make that motion, second vote, yes.
Yes.
Um, request our motion to approve the resolution to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission. And authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second vote, yes, yes, yes.
And request a motion for approval of the disbursements.
I will also make that motion, second.
Anything else? The deal, our next meeting is Monday.
Number twenty six.
Twenty six.
Tuesday.
You have anything at all? A new fire truck, are you buying a pumper truck or a ladder truck?
Oh. The timing, it's like, it's like a, it's like a comet that came and they both line up at the same time. Uh, yeah, so yeah, so a lot of trucks last about twelve years, engines last about sixteen, eight frontline and eight backup.
Did the city treasure a cry when you? Talked about it?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Takes four years now to get.
Which one, which one's more expensive?
Years, that's crazy.
How much is a ladder truck?
A lot. One point six.
Wow.
The prices just keep on up and up.
Did you find room in your budget for Chief Cicero's helicopter and then he keeps asking for?
Only thing is, we keep asking for helicopter too.
Cheaper than a fire truck.
Buy him a little toy, he's never not paying.
Well, Chief Cicero did get his, his helicopter, it's that big. He was presented that, what, last month, I think?
I do wanna say thank you to Chief Cicero and his team, they're iconic, they made arrangements for us to have one of your officers come over tomorrow to do some survey. For us with the photographs, so yeah.
Always available too.
Yeah, thank you.
If you need horses or dog or whatever.
With full-size candy bars.
Uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Go.
Yes.